When does it explode? Okay, let's see.
So thank you very much to attend this special session dedicated to industrial use cases. So our plan is to share with you some real use cases. So for industries that could be also used in some industrial case. So we have a very interesting presentation today. So I won't say that because it's EDF who will start. So you know that I'm working also at EDF. But it's okay. Here we have a presentation by my colleague Mark Patti. Then we will have an interesting experiment or presentation by our colleagues from Great Britain, the company 3D Report. So it will be a surprise. And after that, Jean Banget from France and also project leader for the development of the ISO 10303 AP 242 standard, edition two especially, will share with us some challenges from aeronautics, automotive, but also the manufacturing industry. So we will speak about desolated measures for visualization. We will speak about 3D printing and scanning. So Jean, we will share with you our thoughts and our feedbacks to the presentation, sorry. And then we will finish still with something very innovative. So presentation by another French company, Carnot Computing. So a surprise again. So let's start. So Mark, 20 minutes. Thank you very much.
Merci Christophe. So I'll talk to you about EDF CT platform, just to have short outline. So first, I'll give you a broad idea about the platform itself. Then I'll tell you about the new user interface that we have, which is based on, which is 3D interface based on the web. Then a prototype that we've been doing mostly during last June. And then a conclusion. So what is EDF CT platform? EDF is the main power utility in France and it also exists in other countries. And so we produce and sell electricity, but we are also more and more interested into services. And the kind of services that interest us here are services to urban planners to help them plan the evolution of cities in a way which is the most sustainable possible and which will be efficient from an energy viewpoint, not only energy, but that's our main focus. So the idea that we, in order to help with these services, we are building a platform in which you can upload a neighborhood, a part of a city. Then you can parameter simulations, choose strategies, evolution strategies, build different scenarios, run simulations, and then compare the different scenarios that you've produced and see according to different key performance indicators which scenario is best according to your choices. The simulations we can do are, there are many kinds of simulations. We can look from environments, mobility. There are also simulations which can involve people. The urban system by itself, energy of course, which is our main knowledge, building infrastructure and economics. And the idea is that we don't do, these simulations are separate things, but we really consider that we should aggregate them because we cannot consider every problem as a very distinct thing. All the things are linked within the city itself. So we have all these possible simulations. We can compute more than 100 key performance indicators, but we really consider the city itself as a system and we try to have a systemic approach where we manage the links between all the different aspects of the city that were submitted. In order to build this platform, we've chosen to have an architecture which is quite standard actually. So we have 3D is the entire platform. We have Everest, which is the part where we manage data, we run simulations. We access Everest through RESTful web services. And in front of Everest, we have a user interface called Javi. And this interface is, like I told you, is a 3D web-based user interface. And of course, without any plugins, web GL-based interface. During the development of 3D, at some point, we did a small, very small experiment, which was done in less than two weeks, just in order to evaluate things a bit, see what we could do and change also the developments, which were the real industrial developments. But so we did this small experiment in order to get sure about where we were going. And it was done with Xfreedom. So we built a small scene from the data that we had at the time. We didn't have yet much data, but we managed to build a small scene, integrate it into a webpage through Xfreedom, access the web services and link the platform web services with this Xfreedom experiment, which was very interesting because since X3D is text-based, it was very easy to generate an X3D scene. It was very easy to integrate it into the webpage thanks to Xfreedom. And well, it was done in a very fast way. We had, apart from this experiment, we had a UI which was developed, which was Javi, called Javi. And it has been developed along with the platform itself. So requirements evolved. Many things evolved. The services themselves evolved during this development. And we had to consider this as a prototype, which was good enough for what we wanted to do, which was evolve, really create the platform, but which couldn't be used really in production. So we needed to create a new user interface, mostly with the same functional requirements, the same economics, but which was much more industrial. So this development has been outsourced. I told yesterday that we are outsourcing a lot of things and all this 3D part is not where we add value. We, as EDF, we add value in the simulation, in the simulation models, which are, which represent our knowledge of how buildings on a city work. But the user interface itself is not where we have most value. So we outsourced it and we had to write new specification, mostly by taking the old functional requirements, which had not evolved much, but by being much more specific about non-functional requirements and also about the architecture. So we have this new user interface today, which is based on 3DS and which we can see here. So it's not the fanciest interface that we can see. We've seen other things very interesting during these three days. But actually, it's already very interesting for the urban planners. We did some, we also have another view of the user interface where we can add textures and that sort of things. Actually, we realized that it was not the most useful one because once you try to color things in order to render KPIs, if you have textures, it's harder to see. So this kind of rendering is actually probably the most useful. We don't have millions of buildings because we are planning, we are working with people who plan at the smallest scale. So a few hundred buildings is already something which is interesting for them. And so now we have this user interface, which is in the web, based on 3DS and which can, which allow us to do all the simulations we want to do. I'll show you a short video after my talk. So how did it go taking, removing Javi 1 and putting Javi 2 in place of Javi 1? We have done, well, we have done many things right, but one which was very good was using standards. When we specified how we would communicate between Everest and Javi, we were very adamant about using City GML. There had been other proposals based on the formats by the company who developed the first version. And we said no, we really want to use City GML because it's a standard and everyone can input or output City GML. We know exactly what it's about. And since we've done that, going from the first version to the second one was not such a problem because the interface was standard and it was easy to find different companies were able to propose solutions based on this kind of interface. The fact also that we are web-based implies that we don't have many requirements on the computer on the client side and those requirements didn't change from the first to the second interface. One of the conclusions we had also was that it's now rather easy to find people able to develop for 3D on the web, which was not, probably not that obvious a few years ago. But today, we were able to send a request for proposals to many companies. We had several answers, several very interesting answers. So it's really something that, which is available today for industrial use cases. And also that the fact that expectations are rising rather fast. So maybe when we started, now it's almost four years ago, thinking that we were going to a 3D web interface was not that obvious. It may have seemed a bit risky and today it's just normal for everyone. In order to have this, I told you that we have a City GML interface between Everest and Javi. And in order to go to the web, we don't publish City GML directly. So we need to have some transformation, some preprocessing in order to optimize, translate. And so this process is something which is important in the process. It's even more so important that we want to be, we want users to be able to upload their own City GML files. It's not only the City GML which come with the platform. We want to, then we afford them an interface where they can upload their City GML. So this process has to run smoothly and as fast as possible. Another thing, like I said, we did during, mostly during June, was create an immersive city prototype. So the idea is that the interface I showed you is great for parametering simulations in order, also for rendering results. But for some kind of results, it's interesting to have an immersive visualization. For example, when we proposed to, in some scenarios, to add photovoltaic panels on the roofs, when we proposed to add greenery on some building surfaces, it does have a visual impact on the city. So it's interesting to see that, to be able to see that impact. It's also interesting, there are some cases where visual aspect is very important. For example, one quality of life criterion is the portion of visible sky. So you could, of course, you could compute a map and a color depending on the number of steridians of visible sky or you can just say to people, put the goggles on and have a look. So we thought that it would be interesting to have that and we actually built this prototype. So since we had to do it very fast, we've done this based on Unity. We were very short on time, but we wanted it to be compatible from an architecture viewpoint with the platform. So we've developed some REST services, which are not the ones from the platform, which are really dedicated, adapted services. But we are using RESTful web services on this demo. And so we were able to have actual results from the platform based on an architecture which is compatible with what we should have if we were connected directly to the platform. So just a few screenshots of the demo. So that is what we once saw in the VR headset. We also had a screen on the side in order to help, well, to see what people saw in the Oculus. It was an Oculus. And we showed different results. We could see different scenarios. And here, for example, you see that we have the business as usual scenario where we don't add photovoltaic panels on the roofs. Here we add them and we see that it does make a difference. So that is the kind of goal we wanted to reach. Here we also see that we have charts for different values for different indicators. So this was demoed during an exploring Paris and on the EDF booth. We had lots of feedback. Like I said, we had a screen on the side in order to show what was seen within the headsets. And we had lots of good feedback. So as a conclusion, well, it's a surprise to no one here, but we've confirmed that we can actually have something with the 3D web UI in production. This is actually in production today. It's used by Singapore, HDB, the Housing Development Board of Singapore. So it's not an experiment we've done, it's something which is actually used. We've also confirmed the interest of standard. X3D, we're not using X3D today in the UI itself because since we outsourced the development, the choice was made by the other company. But we used it in order to create the first proof of concept and it was very fast because it's set, it was very easy to implement. We also are very happy to have used City GML as an interchange format because it made, well, it made the change to Javi 2 possible. And we've also seen the necessity to have very well-defined non-functional requirements because we had some lacking about this on the first version and well, we paid it on some aspects. Future work, well, there are many more things which should be ready about. For example, we are interested in pollution too. So that means some, probably some kind of volumetric rendering or similar dots. We have to see how we do that. Larger areas, we're interested in more and more, in larger and larger areas, higher level of detail. We, like as you saw, we are mostly LOD 1, LOD 2 right now from City GML viewpoint. So we would like to go further than that. Also worked a lot on the content management. So the quality control, being able to make sure that when someone uploads a City GML, we are able to say it's good or not, it will work with the platform or not. And some visual enhancements. So we, for example, in the immersive demo, we had a lot of work, which was done in order to, a lot of design, which was in order to have something which was comfortable enough for the users. Now if I have time for a question?
We can take one or two questions during.
During questions, I just.
So any questions for Mark? Professor Ah, yeah, please.
Can you compare your systemic, similar other systems? Other than one is just in our world?
So from the user interface viewpoint, well, we've seen different other systems during these three days. And from visual viewpoint, we probably are not the best ones. But what we have actually, the important part for us here is the simulations. And there are lots of codes which are into the platform and which are based on the knowledge of experts about buildings, about many, many aspects at EDF. So we would have to compare from, for each domain, the different aspects. We are also able to integrate codes from other, from partners. If we, because we don't, possibly we don't have all the knowledge available for, in order to address all the issues a city wants to see addressed. So if that is the case, we're able to work with partners, integrate their simulation models into the platform in order, in order to make sure that we have the best simulation possible on each domain and integrated.
Okay. No other questions? Please.
What kind of improvements do you see for the immersive ceiling?
First one will be, and that is something that we're planning to do this year, is actually connecting it to the platform, which is very important. We know that we won't put everything into the immersive version. You won't be able to play with the hundreds of parameters and that kind of things, but we should be able to parameter a simulation in the web user interface, launch a simulation and see the results. That's the most important one. Now also many small details. Sometimes the charts are not very visible, so we have to do some things about that. But it's, this is really a small, a list of small items. The most important one is connection to the platform. Now that we've shown that it's possible and it's useful, we have to do it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark. So next presentation, we will have a very quick setup. So I need to start my own computer. You try to set up and then I introduce everyone. Sorry, just to be sure that, ah.
Sorry, just to be sure that, ah. Enjoying it?
Yes. Do you know which way that thing is looking?
It hasn't broken.
It's got two ends looking out.
You know, it's not tracking anything.
I'm just gonna use some duct tape.
Okay, so next presentation, it's a bit unusual, I will say. So our colleague, Yozef Doboz from 3D Report, is attending his own wedding. So he sent us a video, and a special one. So here you have a QR code, you have also some short URL and a long one, where you can connect if the network is working, of course. Small, small detail. And you can also use your phone, smartphone, with some headsets, if you want, to see the presentation by Yozef in a 360-degree video. So I will present very quickly Yozef, and, um... So Yozef is a founder and CEO of 3D Report, a spin-off from his work on versioning 3D models at University College London, so UCL. He studied artificial intelligence at Imperial College London and received a doctorate and doctorate in engineering from UCL in 2014. So 3D Report has won numerous awards, including the MongoDB World 2014 Innovation Award in the open source category, the Breakthrough Information Technology Industrial Exchange Award, and the UCL Enterprise Bright Ideas Award amongst others. Yozef is a professional member of the British Computer Society, the Charford Institute for IT. So, Sebastien, let's start. What I need to do?
Thank you very much for the introduction. You've introduced everything that I was going to say. We are going to attempt to livestream Joseph's address to this session through your final terms using Google Live Events. So you can watch it on your mobile laptop or tablet. It's 360, so you can move around with the mouse or touchscreen or accelerometer. And if you have a stereoscopic viewer, you can watch it in VR. One note, the video should be synced to everyone's device, but only within a couple of seconds. So if you have headphones, I advise you to use them. We will be having a view of the video playing on here with audio. So if you don't want to use your own device, you can watch it here. Or if you don't care about lag, you can listen to the audio here on your own device. That's it. Please use the QR code or the URL to go to the livestream event. In a minute or so, once everyone's connected, I will start the video and off we go.
Thank you.
Good, so we thought we'll do studies, we have this great video, interesting thing. So you have to get the, see our roofies and what we do. And we'll show you a couple of projects. I'm going to try to keep it very forward-facing so that you have to rotate the camera too much, but you can use a mobile phone to look around. And Sebastien will be there to keep any guidance to the video. So to be careful, we do doing virtual modeling using virtual technology. In the construction industry, it's very complex, way managing of projects. I think a lot of stakeholders and different parties involved, starting with client and consultants, architects, people, contractors, suppliers, and so on. So it's a process and all the different parties can figure on the technical exchange and manage data usually these days it's in 3D. We try to sit in the middle and provide the common data environment as the UK government. In 2011, in the UK government, one day we can use of quality 3D technologies for multi-construction. The aim is then really to save money because of cost and also in this kind of conditions by just proper managing and submitting data of these projects. They publish number of different specifications and public information through the British National Executive Execution, which I find a way pretty should be managed and collecting data. What we provide is a lot of databases and record of this information, and we have a number of clients who display of these 3D models, metadata, videos and so on. In the cloud, the ultimate goal from our studies to save time and improve the margin and also helping around safety, then really provide benefits for the entire construction in supply chain. If you signify the design construction process, you can say that we design developments that is taking good construction and ultimately handle a facility management. So we can use the same toolset for all these. We started with design coordination, allowing some facilities in the meantime discussion, then making the whole process more transparent. Once the design is completed, then we want to construct it so people can now take their 3D models and have the designs on site. They can instantly be brought to office as well. And finally, once the construction is complete, we can once again to same interface from the same road through facilities management and all the needs to come. In the big open center, there is a database where we collect all the different data formats we use from other countries, open formats and so on, and we connect throughout different types of resources of the stakeholders. So we started with this design, 3D models, making the pattern, morph into a sphere. And finally, as is in those games, visually change every time and people modify space. Last year, we won the conversation challenge by coming in and group and workshop. Examples of the before can. Here is the federation of the whole Kariro estate, which is the city financial district London. And Kariro is doing the W, which has a thousand and match of lights. So we pulled off the tie to the browser through the components and third components. And each of these has different teams of companies and consultants. There's an idea, top-down, and these are two blocks we're working on. Britain is starting with the basement with these companies, but designing was a hassle. So I didn't decide to switch to be capable with these guys and also be wanting to design for the action purposes. So what they can do using our system is they can issue new models, fill back the model online, and then use the commenting and paint features to exchange ideas. Let's call it so, through the whole process. So there are three examples. We are actual restrictions from the project. Everything ready for, any distance from the company of, under company. Is that sufficient? It's very difficult to run and land it, and then people can go, uh, invite them into the and change the specification as required. There's another one, mostly innovative, having a possible product, we have it done. So what we enable is real-time collection of the 3D models. These are visualized using the, like, let me build a model. So running construction, you can place comments, like, check, write, or any other. Social network features, and the checking of things that we perform, they generate design, but also those that makes, so the 59 standard to be having. We also created a number of different consultants in all sorts of projects that have made architect designer, so there's consultants and so on, that separate the classes of respective things. We can also use these to actually solve different types of issues. Different parties can be, like, you may do that. There is a quote from one of the, they said, how we solve it. If you help to replace and stake judge of what should be the initial term. So I was only, uh, funding, we also managed to very quickly collect the information about the progress on science, so you can see how we look at the clause issues. But then, as the various types of factors involved, and here is very obvious that there are problems and a few of your, with your structure because of the problem, which is that. So the main benefits for the, for this project are the issue tracking. The placement of the emails, then also providing the meeting, the access on the side. Companies can team up to experiment with using our solution, they instantly save around one week, so, uh, design alone. Now, once we got all the information online, we also use it to break the cycle of call and so on, but we also, on the ground, understand and commission this kind of education. Nature quite like this one, something that was a part of which cost around 50 pounds. So you can buy six of these, one height, and we can also update those on these next week. So we are okay next, this definition of our high files, which are from the customer information, where instead of exchanging money, you know, that might break analysis. There's the same function, I can buy, draw a cycle, set also, sort of facilities management for these to come. With an example, using QR codes on site, you can always insert a particular plus one based on specific assets, and you can install access. So what you do is design these asset types, which are the asset label and the, you know, the component that is in that, they are being expanded QR code in this camera and it's all the data from the dial. It also supports, uh, the charging, the direct from the account that has lost, from start to end, because that's actually the value shown down on the second. There are some, some projects we will have, so we'll know about extending transformation project, Bonforbeating, HST3 custom project with Bonforbeating out of the island of Zealand. The cross-run, with the cross, we got a new large, um, channel for Ecos London. As long as they are in the location, we got a public, you can see here, it's from the base mark, so that we can also mount directly in the browser. A five by six highway is a bit costly. And this is us, so now we're going to introduce another team of persons.
Hello, so we work on all sorts of projects related to construction industry here in 3D Report. And what I'm going to show you is a pilot project we need for Highways England, which is the network operator of all highways in the UK. We managed to load seven kilometers of new highway into our platform, which ran fairly smoothly on our hardware browser and even on our, you know, very powerful laptop. We worked with other company called Brightly Move, who are engineers and they provide that bit data visualization, and we managed to fill it all in to our platform. We also enhanced some objects with the metadata, like there were a lot of trees, a lot of gates with all sorts of metadata categories that should have. We also did, we managed to link it with the light camera feed, which we, yeah, which is this one. The camera feed is updated every, every couple of minutes, so it wasn't like last, my phone wasn't close to me, but we managed to link our various data sources into the platform. Another thing we need for that was highlighting the various project stages. Those are requirements, which is shown here. So we can also search things with the platform, we can, it's a, we realize models, we can link them to other existing sources of information, we can group them, highlight them, we can script them, we can mark them, or as they can use, or comment, and we can, we believe that that makes the platform truly cooperative.
All right, I'm working on the user interface experience for 3D Report. One of the things I like currently is listing the projects and also just profiling information that the user can change, filling information, that the user can see previous films, but also change that information, also increase those some to a films. We still have A5 3P, and then once the user has a number of licenses, the user can then assign another collaborator, just like the collaborator. Here's the license. The username that the customer is already subscribed to and assigns that as a collaborator, was a new collaborator, the user can then be assigned a project. And this project that you here would have all the collaborators that are being raised. Once the collaborator has, once a collaborator then has been assigned a team member, when that user looks at 3D Rico, they will see this project, for example, test as possible. Which means that they now look at model and add comments, show, for example, if a struggle project was, I predict that they were assigned to a team member, they could pick on something, and view the model and all the issues related to the model, and also have issues, one of the ways to add the issues to script, say, whatever you like. And also, and then save that. Once that's saved, all the episodes of team can see that issue and within that list of issues, they will see all, they comment, and add a comment if they want to.
Okay, yeah, I, I will.
So all this information can be shared in the team.
All right, so I'm currently working on the map tile integration. So a map tile integration is for projects, you can specify latitude and altitude. And once you specify this to data, and the system will start putting map tile images from different servers, for example, from our server and Google Maps server or our script server. So as you move along, the system will get a different kit of each buildings from the original survey data, and the system will generate the 3D model of each building on the site. And you can also click on a building to see the metadata of each building, for example, the poverty type and the address. And different buildings are rendered as different colors according to their poverty type.
So one of the products we have is 3D Rico Music, which is a 3D that you have to experience. The model you see here is loaded directly from our Rexbase server. So as long as you upload a model to our server, we can load it into a virtual reality. And a panel behind me, behind the camera, is showing, running around the model up here. They need to walk around, and there is a control to teleport to the bicycle. And it's a, it's application that's perfect for user experience for things such as the smoking demonstration, presenting to users.
So that's pretty magic. We won a lot of awards, we published a little paper, well, this is what we're doing, so we're seeing the final outcome of the project, and get in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's not as interesting as Jaguars in the Jungle, I would grant you that, but there was a high-resolution live version that will be on YouTube within a few moments. Thank you.
So thank you very much. So it was the first time, so we have, we have tried to make it lively and, yeah, depending of the network, the resolution was a bit noisy sometimes, but yes, thank you very much. If you have any question, I suggest that you can keep them for the end of the session so that we can perhaps gain a few minutes in our delay. So, Jean, let me introduce you very briefly. Jean is not only the project leader for developing the standard State BP242 Edition 2, he is also director of R&amp;D in France of a company called Ouz, and also a dirty member of French associations dedicated to IT and especially at the, I would say, top-level management level. So, and very involved in France in developing standards about... level management level, so, and very involved in France in developing standards about data exchange, digital marker for Aeronautics and automotive.
Yes, thank you. So we follow up on what I presented quickly two days ago. So it's about ten to three, which is step, and how do we link product definition, management, and visualization into value chain? So if we look at the genetic of step, it was data exchange. So the issue was, you had a supply chain of industry, this was an example in automotive, multiple people using all kinds of softwares, and this is introduced in the standard. So it's really about representation and exchange of product data, and it's about having a neutralized format for exchange, but also to be able to build product databases, and encoding the data. So this was the objective of step initially. Based on that, many people have used step a lot, so this is what, first of all, Eros Defense is using step for, so the whole lifecycle, and what is in red is what is related to geometry. So we have a huge, a huge amount of application protocols, which are based on geometry, in order to go on to the lifecycle. I've already presented this to the group, but I provided another example, this project we are doing now in France, in Europe in fact, but we started in France with the rail industry, and the same thing, that if you look at the whole lifecycle, we discovered that they need to collaborate a lot, and they need to have this consistent infrastructure to work. And what was very interesting in that one, this is an ongoing work, and we just started two months ago, three months ago, and they have put as a priority to be able to have virtual reality in the design phase on the whole supply chain, including small companies. So they are looking for solutions in order to integrate virtual reality at design phase at low cost and very efficiently. So this is something we have to work on, and we have to have this integrated into the whole lifecycle, design, requirement, design, manufacturing, maintenance, so that's the objective. So, how do we work in cross-organization processes? Because in step, the process is not part of the standard. When you think of step, people think that it's fine, have a data standard, so I can connect my software and works. That's a very big misunderstanding, it does not work like that. So in fact, we need to define collaboration processes. So we start with a collaboration process, so two different companies, two different organizations, it can be a big company with different silos, it's the same thing, they must define a collaboration process, they have their own processes, they need to work together, and these two private processes, they would need to interact, so they would send requests, and you need to set up a collaborative application in order to have this working. When you do that, then you define applications, which will be based on the softwares, and this is where we get our standards, which comes, that is, we will use a standard A P two forty-two, which will define how your application will work, this defines the data format you're going to use, and this will allow you to define a specific standardized process for your work. This is not part of the standard, this is part of the standard, this is part of a specific way of working together. What we are doing in both in France and in Europe, we are helping industries to define these processes based on this standard. So as soon as you have defined a standard process for collaboration, you can speed up innovation a lot, and you're not touching what everyone is doing at home, that's very important. So if we look today, this is what we can do with step. We do mechanical model-based engineering, which works fine, which is based on geometry, and we can define all kind, all kind of components. We also do multidisciplinary analysis, so simulations. We also have something which allows us to do system engineering, which is not really used in fact, but it's available, this one are in operation in industry. We can do electronic assembly interconnection, and also the, also packaging of electronics. We do product life support, and we also do manufacturing. So all these things work together on an integrated data model, on which, on top of which, we have, how do you say, geometry. But when we look, when we look at that, we see that it's a lot about the data, it's a product data, it's not, management is coming, so we have, we want to be able to manage the data here, want to be able to manage the data here, and to manage it here. So that's, how do we put the management into it? So it's a very important issue. Last thing is about visualization. So this is an example we did, that was my team, we did this the last three years. We started with an existing standard, which was J T, which is ISO fourteen three oh six, and in which we had an issue with geometry, because geometry was not, was not being able to be the standard because it was a proprietary format. So we have, we are requested to include it into the standard, standard geometry, in order that we can reference the geometry from, from the visualization format. So we can visualize the data, and we can connect it to the exact geometry. When we do this, we were challenged about the performance of step, so we did a lot of performance benchmark on the use of step compared to the use of specific optimized columns. And the result was very impressive, because what we discovered is was that, did not, we were sure that we would get this result, but it was very weird to prove it. So we were able to get much better performance with step than with proprietary format, and what's most important of it is that we wrote a piece of code, just to demonstrate that it's mostly about implementation, than about the data format itself. But we're able to add better performance by accessing directly the ASCII data, than people which were working on the binary data, and it was very impressive. So the question next is, so what do we do with this visualization, and how do we work with step on visualization? Question is, what is 3D visualization? It's not, it's not very obvious, I tried to put some definition, it's not finished, but this is a viewpoint that, if you look at it from industry, it could be this, I would like to share this with you, I would like to get comment on that. So is 3D visualization as a visualization, as a visual presentation on the screen, or another media, that's very important, not on screens, any kind of media? Of graphical and textual three-dimensional representation of a set of data, representing objects, or informations, or results of computational processes, in order to do what? So when you look at the main usage of this 3D visualization in industry, not talking about other topics, but in industry, it's about enable decision process, that is, we are doing reviews, you put people in a cave, it's not just to be in a cave, it's just to take a decision against the design, take a decision because of a problem, so it's about, it's really about decision and management. And decisions are done by human, so it's very important, it's a human interface to the information, and to complex those information. And so I put some examples, so we have seen that, we have also, we have seen the last two days, that there were other way of painting this, for the 3D printer, is a 3D visualization somehow, for me, it's not, visualization does not mean screen, also mean 3D print. But it can also be about entertainment, learning, understanding. I guess entertaining is not part of the industry, and the companies, but it's, so I've put back some very old pictures for me, which are very important, this is a nice project in VRML, that was back in nineteen ninety-seven, or ninety-eight, something like this, seven. Okay, that's for me most of all. And this is one of my first project, that's nineteen eighty, eighty-nine, before, and it was, it was designed, it's built, and this shape here has been a result of a creative visualization of, of the objects, that is, I made, when I was designing this building, my computer was computing every night, and I was looking at this path, visualizing, and when I got the requirement I was looking for, it fixed the shape. So this building had a, had a shape which was completely defined in nineteen eighty-nine, using 3D visualization. At that time, we are not able to make it move in real time, it did not work. So that's, so I'd be glad to challenge this, and we will need in ISO, a definition for that in the next years, maybe in next month, to be good that your group can provide input on that, what is 3D visualization? I think it would be challenging in the next years, of course. Just to, before the last, the last two slides, for which I'm going to request you some feedback, so that's the scope of what we do in A P two forty-two in step. So we see that the scope goes from geometry, we do the shapes, we do the exact geometry, the desolation, but we also do 2D drafting, we do the different representation, we have the parametrics and the construction history, we have the product manufacturing information, we get all the kind of specific design composition of these elements in order to provide mechanical composites, the 3D printing, the A P two colors, and on top of that, we get things which are more about meta data, product data management, the process planning, Latin definition, things like this, which are, so here we are geometry, here we are data management, here we are in between, and this is what it, what it is about. So if you look at it, in a very abstract way, we have a U K data model, which includes a whole data landscape that we need for engineering, development, manufacturing, operations, and maintenance of any kind of complex product. We have a very important concept, which is alternate representation, that any object can be multi-represented at any time, we're able to manage this, and we have defined an optimized representation for visualization, so we have defined a desolation in step, which is a derivation of what we can do with B reps, that we can do with triangles and meshes. So this has been defined there, and because we're in step, everything which is here is always linked with everything, so when you query something here, you can have an answer on the requirement, or the meta data, or whatever the materials, because the data model is complete. So we have an information node, and we have a template presentation form. So how can we work together? So I have, after the meeting two days ago, I've put this down, and for me, this, after the last two days, this is for me the way we should try to think what we could do. So what we could, what we do today, in step, is that we get CAD, for which we can translate models into the step geometry, and from this, we can select whatever we want in our information model, to define, we're already at, we have, we have already done this, we have a small subset of the whole step geometry, which is called A P two forty-three, which allows to define simple geometry. We're also, we are also able to transform this model in order to get a step decision, which is an optimized representation for the visualization. The question is, today we are missing visualization tools. We don't have, they exist, we have seen that, there are labs, there are places, some people have very good tools, but from my viewpoint, they are not at the level of what we got with X three D. I think we have much better performance with X three D than what we have with step visualization. And so about the data format, just simply about the tools, but things that no one cares. So, so the question is, could we, here we have models, information model that we have translated, that we have derived from the exact geometry to something which is optimized for visualization, could we have a language transformation, a binding, which will allow us to get from step to X three D, just a simple binding? I guess maybe some people have done that. If not, we could do it, and we could try to maintain it, that is, when this evolves, this gets applied to things, and this. And from there, we could get 3D viewers, we already get, we don't have to do anything, they're there. So next question is, how do we do and manage 3D printing and 3D scanners? Because these are in scope of step for smart manufacturing, both of them. So is there a relationship between X three D and the 3D scan, X three D and the 3D printers, that we could take advantage of step in manufacturing? So that's, for me, it's a good question, so for the, for the group. I'd be more or less...
Well, should I use the mic? I guess you've asked for feedback on visualization, and one use of visualization is a kind of search, I mean, we've all had the experience probably of, I don't know what something is called, but I know what it looks like. And you know, you go to a catalog, or you go to the store, and you look at all the things on the shelf, and you say, that's it. Is, is there some effort to stand, I mean, you mentioned, I think with your fourth slide, you have standard formats, but the top level was not standard, it was a business...
Process.
Process. Is that the kind of thing which you would formalize, or describe as a process, the idea of...
Search, yeah. Search is clearly a process. You, you want to be...
Search will be a process, and search in big data will be a process. And the type of data we are talking of is really big data, that is, we are producing more and more 3D information, it's more and more complex, more and more detailed, we have seen it with medical, but the same with everywhere, and we've seen it with the DF just before, so we are talking about huge chunk, huge amount of data. So if we have good search tools, that of course we can, the human eye, it can be very efficient to do some things. Yeah, we could add, we could add search here, search, and also compare. But that's, it's really, it's, I think it's, it would be interesting to get this definition, because it will help people to position the different usage, the different format from one to the other one. That is, if I want to, what we can do with step is very obvious, when you are in the engineering, in the detail, design, things like this, you can, you imagine everything we can do. If I want to search, or to compare, yeah, maybe I need something else, maybe I need something which keep me more efficient, more flexible, more, I can move, change the colors, I like a lot of things, you can do many, 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 many things with visualization. Other thoughts about that? So you should be...
Just your next slide, please, thank you. The last slide.
The last slide.
Thank you so much for your time being here, because this aligns in a really interesting way with our 3D printing, 3D scanning workshop on Friday, and if there's a larger win-win possible, we would like that. Even more important, shared professional scrutiny of what is the best path forward that serves all these needs, will have great value for all concerned, so we look forward to continuing this.
So thank you very much, Jean, first. Any other questions? Of some?
Can I see the slide?
It's coming.
One thing we should see that the green arrow there is one way.
Yes.
That is the view we have, stack committee is have.
Yes.
So we cannot have a reverse arrow from X three D to cat one. Usually, that's why, because of the testation, something we lose information. So then, I don't know, how can we do three, the arrows coming to 3D printers and scanners?